Good evening, everybody. We are reconvening our regular board meeting of June 23rd. We convened at 5:30 into closed session and we're back. I want to welcome everyone. We have with us at the board, the table, a member of the inner city student council. Would you please introduce yourself?
Chanelle Leopold from Preble High School.
Thank you and welcome. And as always, please feel free to engage with us on any topics. And we also have Superintendent Vicki Byer. So if everyone would please stand and say their pledge. Thank you.
James?
Yes, I'm about to, about to do that. I think if I'm reading your mind. So also at the table this evening is a newly appointed board member. This Dr Samantha Meister. And we have elected that she will read the mission statement this evening.
Thank you. We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you and welcome. The land acknowledgement. We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current home of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. Okay, we're going to go to the next portion of our agenda, which is recognition. And these are always fun and exciting moments. So we have a couple of items tonight. Tonight is my pleasure to acknowledge two organizations in our community who deserve to be recognized for their contributions to the Green Bay area public school district. The Friend of Education Award is bestowed upon an individual, organization, or group whose leadership, acts, or support have significantly benefited the Green Bay area public school district, its employees, and/or students. First, I would like to acknowledge Shopko Optical. They have been partnered with the Green Bay area public school district for two years as our provider for the school-based vision program. Shopko Optical has provided more than 300 eye exams and glasses through their Kids in Focus program. Most recently, they provided four days of eye exams at Nicolay Elementary Community School, examining 91 students, of which 76 needed new or updated prescriptions, and six were referred for follow-up care. The ongoing services and commitment that Shopko Optical provides our students and their families is immeasurable. They remove a barrier to a student's ability to learn and flourish in school, resulting in greater academic achievement. We are grateful for your commitment to our children. At this time, if I could ask Kurt Lauterbach from Shopko Optical to come forward and receive your award.
Definitely want to thank everyone for this opportunity here. Quite honestly, when Amy reached out to us a couple of years ago, we really had no idea how many lives we could touch with Kids in Focus. And to be able to see over 300 students here, as you referenced, it truly is difference-making to be able to provide the right eyewear to make students better students, to make athletes better athletes. It's quite a privilege that we get to do and having the opportunity to help those in need is truly great here. Definitely, I thank, I thank everybody for this award. The team I have at Shopko Optical, from our market, marketing team, our merchandising team, the doctors, the opticians, the lab team that made the glasses, they're the ones that really made all this happen. So I want to thank them and thank you. So we really look forward to keep doing this and we're excited about doing it again next year. So thank you.
Thank you. So no, no Kurt, don't, don't go anywhere. So board, let's go over to the backdrop and take a picture, please. All right. It is also my pleasure to recognize a cohort of individuals who dedicated significant time this year, this school year, to learn more about the Green Bay area public schools. I want to acknowledge and extend my appreciation to Superintendent Byer for her leadership in identifying the need in the district and for setting a priority of intentional community engagement. In addition, I wish to express the board's gratitude to the Green Bay area public school, the public schools education foundation chair, Eric Vandenhuvel, for partnering with the district and leading the sessions. Tonight, we recognize the first ambassador academy cohort. This group of individuals spent time together each month, learning about the inner workings of the district and participating in a book study. Schools cannot do it alone. More importantly, they provided valuable feedback and asked great questions to help us as we continue to do what is best for our kids. Not any could join us this evening, but for those of you who are in with us, who are with us tonight, please come forward and receive your certificate and then we'll take a group photo. So Terry Bush, Jennifer Fashionbauer, Amy Hogan, Beth Kowalski, Virginia Muwa, Tom Murphy, Melanie Parma, Alyssa Prophet, Shannon Z Meyer, Z Meyer Tabaska, sorry about that. Why Yila Tao? If that's, I apologize if I. And Joanna Wickland. Thank you. All right, we're going to move to agenda item four, open forum. And if there's anyone that has yet to register to speak, now is the last chance. Does anyone wish to speak? So we'll move on to agenda item number five, updates. Clean energy advisory committee update, I think, is that Kale? Good evening Kale.
Hello. Good afternoon or good evening. Sorry, I'm trying to get my, there it goes. Thank you. I just have a brief update for the board tonight. The clean energy committee held their monthly meeting on June 10th. Luanne O'Leary graciously filled in for myself and led that meeting. I was able to attend about the last 30 minutes of that. During this meeting, I'll just a few highlights. We noted, we had a survey out regarding clean energy to our community. We did receive those that closed on the 13th. So we did not discuss in this meeting, we will discuss those, that information in our next meeting in July. We did schedule visits to Star Elementary for the geothermal well drilling. That first site visit was held last Thursday. We had three members join. And we have another time slotted for this Thursday for that team to come out and see what is actually the tail end of the geothermal well drilling. And then we also had a presentation from Jenny Brinker in regards to a grant-funded net zero pathways presentation for six of our schools. This kind of was in unison with our McKinstry information that we've had with them. This again was a grant-funded piece that that team had put together. That presentation is available and will be posted. It lays out essentially additional information of how we can meet some of our, our clean energy goals. Again, a lot of that aligns with what McKinstry's pathway that they're developing for us has in it. So it was, it was nice to have another set of eyes on that and information to help us meet our clean energy goals. And then finally, we had McKinstry update the team. So they are currently working on a few things for us. One, finalizing our pathway to that clean energy. Getting our, our desktop or our, sorry, our dashboard up and running for some of our solar projects where we can see live information for some of the clean energy steps we've already taken. And then as well as update us on some projects that we are exploring that may be presented as projects here in the upcoming months or years to help us continue to achieve or work towards our clean energy goals. So it was, it was a good agenda and, and a lot of information from both the net zero pathways and McKinstry. And we'll reconvene again, I believe, July 8th for our next month meeting. Any questions?
Questions? Laura?
I don't really have a question, but um, I just want to say that after, after your big presentation, was it back in December where your plan was submitted? Some people would think maybe that there'd be a little bit of a lull in the work, but there has not been a lull in the work clearly. And every time you come before us, I can see that. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate that. It's, we've got a deadline and it feels like it's a long way away. But the, it's such a huge lift that we need all that time and probably more to get, achieve the goal that we set. So, thank you.
Other questions? I have one. So can you remind me if we were able to actually execute the alternatives on both properties that are being renovated, Doty and I think it's Chapel?
Chapel opens next week. Don't quote me on the exact date of that. So Chapel has not opened yet, so I can't say that. Doty, we did accept the alternate for the solar array on that project.
Thank you. Other questions? Right Kale, thank you. We'll go to 5B legislative update, Jeanette.
Thank you. So you've all received the grid that we've been using. And you'll notice that most things say no change. And these are education bills. They're not really part of the budget. So I'd like to make a short comment about the budget. First of all, right now, it doesn't look like the budget's going to be approved by July 1st. So we're going to be waiting a little bit longer. Actually, they're not talking to each other, I believe, unless that changed this morning. Now, something that has been pushed out there is that there has been an increase for high-cost special education aid that has been proposed to be put in the budget. And there are some legislators that are saying, whoa, this is great. This is historical. We're really funding special education. But the money is going to high-cost special education aid, not to the overall general special education. And so this funding impacts about 0.5, 0.5% of the entire students. It impacts 3% of all the special education students. And of course, not every student in the district gets special education services. So it's only 0.5% of the students statewide. Okay? So keep that in mind when you're hearing that this is such a good thing that they're supporting special education, 0.5% of the students. So they're dragging their feet on education. There's lots of things happening with the budget. I would like to urge everyone to either make a phone call to their legislators, senators, assembly reps, even to the governor, and say how you feel about the budget. Because when the budget doesn't fill the needs, we're going to have to cut things that nobody's going to like cutting. And you can thank the representatives that didn't increase education in the budget. We have $4 billion excess money in the state that they're not releasing. Please reach out to your assembly reps and your senators. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you Jeanette. Anyone have a question for Jeanette? Laura?
I don't know if who can answer this for me, but the funding for Act 20 work, that's still, that hasn't been released yet either, has it? Okay, any, does anyone have any idea when that might happen? Or are we expecting it to just basically never happen?
According to the WASP, WASB, W A S B? Is that how you say it WASB? Thank you. Yeah, they're thinking it's not going to happen. And then that money goes back into the general fund. So it's gone forever, basically, if we don't get it.
On funded mandate. Another one.
Any other questions? So Jeanette, you may not be able to answer this. I'm pretty sure you can answer this. But Vicki, as we see the budget kind of continue to mature or get close, is it possible to have Angie come to the board? Because I'm really interested in understanding and having others understand what it means to say that there's no additional shared revenue, yet there's a 20, the $325 increase in the spending cap. Because it's my understanding that that is a direct drop into the property tax bill without any augmentation or funds from the state. So if we can kind of get a, a picture of that as we go forward, I appreciate it. Because you know, we, we went on record as we went through referendum that, you know, it is our job not to increase the mill rate. And it feels like we're not getting support in that mission from the state.
You are correct in that. If the state legislature adopts the proposal that came from the joint finance committee, that $325 per pupil additional fees or funds that right now are coming out of state aid would shift to local property owners. So that would impact mill rate if you are a property owner in the state of Wisconsin. Our, our mill rate would go up. And to Jeanette's point about the high-needs special ed for us, that will equate to about $200,000. That's it. That would cover expenses for maybe two students that are, are high-needs for our district. So thank you for bringing attention to that, Jeanette.
Other questions, statements? All right, thank you. And we'll move on to agenda item six, consent agenda. Will someone please read the motion? Go ahead.
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second?
Any discussions? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item eight, A, the sale of real property adjacent to Preble. So will someone please read the motion?
I move that the commercial offer to purchase parcel 21-8068 with a purchase price of $60,000 as presented be approved.
Second?
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. We'll move to eight B, land exchange agreement between Village of Alaway and Green Bay. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that the proposed exchange of land with the Village of Alaway at the following sites, Langley Elementary and Webster Elementary, including the described agreements, contingencies, and details as presented be approved.
Second?
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Meister, yes. Canell, yes. Minno, yes. Gerlock, yes. Lyerly, yes. McCoy, yes. Becker, no. Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. We'll move to eight C, general contractor award for auxiliary services. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that ACE Building Service be awarded the bid for the general contractor for the building addition and renovation project that the auxiliary service is building in the amount of $3,550,500 as presented be approved.
Second?
There's a second by Jeanette. Discussion? Laura?
That very large amount just reminded me to, like, we should probably tell people in the audience who are watching that we've, these have all been discussed already in our last meeting. Like, we're not just seeing this for the first time.
I was going to state that as, so some of these things are novel. Um, so as we get down to E, I was going to make that same announcement. But you're right. Any other discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
We'll move to eight D, award of contract for bidirectional amplifiers. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that Nielsen be awarded the contract for bidirectional amplifier improvements at East High School, Franklin Middle School, Lombardi Middle School, Preble High School, Southwest High School, Washington Middle School, and West High School in the amount of $349,814.43 as presented be approved.
Second?
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. So now I'm going to second what Laura said. Rest of the agenda has primarily been discussed at our work session and now we're just going to take action on the items that were discussed. We'll move to eight E. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that the Boys and Girls Club of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers and/or Fund 80 community-based after-school programs for the 2025 to 26 school year for Dan's and Fort Howard Elementary Schools for a total of 282,800. for a total of $282,860. As presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion? We'll get it. Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Moving on to Eight F, selection of providers for community-based after-school programs. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that the YMCA of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers and/or Fund 80 community-based after-school programs for the 2025, 2026 school year for Baird, Beaumont, Doty, Eisenhower, Howe, and Sullivan Elementary Schools for a total of $872,173.22. As presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
We'll move to Eight G, potential change to District's internal, uh, Internal Income Protection Part, Protection Plan. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that the district transition the Internal Protection Plan from the current 82.5% of income replaced, 60% of income replaced as presented be approved. Second.
Okay. So at this point, I think the, the votes will be taken. And Alex, I think you all abstain from voting. All right. Discussion? Lynn?
I would just like to explain why I chose option two instead of option one and/or keeping it as it is. This is a difficult thing. But the staff has come to us several times now in the last few months and offered us opportunities to make a hard decision in light of a $10 million deficit that we are facing. And this is one of those hard decisions. What's good about this is it will, the change will apply only to people as they enroll in it. Anyone who's already involved in the pay, uh, the protection, income protection plan is not going to be affected. It will be new enrollees. They will all know exactly what the terms are. It's very transparent. They will know that if they choose to enroll in this and a very, very small number of our staff do enroll in this program, this is what they will be able to recover 60% of their income. So that's why I chose that one. I think it is a fair and clear opportunity to save some money.
Yeah, Andrew?
I'm, I'm going to move to amend the motion by replacing 60% with 70%.
Second. Okay, so at this point, we're discussing the amendment to the motion. So anyone want to have a discussion on 70% versus 60%? Andrew?
Yeah, so I, I know of, you know, in the, in the overall trade-offs that have happened over generations between educators choosing a lower salary for a more generous benefits package. 60 puts this number below the percentage of income reimbursement that I've, I've known of for several people I know in the, it actually takes it below some of the private sector funding, private business funding that I know, which maybe is around two-thirds. So I just wanted to get the, the vote out there between, I want the board to be on record between 60 and the 60 option and the, the 70 option. There's still savings under the 70 option. I also want to clarify that the, the word enrollee does not mean, is not being used here in any kind of intuitive sense of the word. It, it does mean if you're drawing disability right now, if you're drawing IPP right now, you at 82.5, you'll stay on it for the duration of the incident. But this isn't about, conventional wisdom would be people would think of new enrollees as new employees, but in fact, it's, it's everyone after they, the only people that don't immediately have their number changed would be those who are drawing right now. And they'll change as soon as they stop drawing. Is that correct?
I appreciate the clarification, Andrew, and I think. Jeanette?
I agree with Andrew. So when I did a little bit of research previous before our work session and we were discussing this further, most disability payments range between 40 to 70%. Most employers do not provide this. They provide a plan, as we discussed a few months ago, that the employee, employee can purchase. And I think that was reimbursing at less than 70%. 70% is a generous amount, but I agree that we ask our teachers to do a lot. And I agree with this 70%, even though that's really the top end of what most disability plans will reimburse. I think our teachers are worth it.
Others? Okay, so at this point, we'll take a vote, Kenzie, on the amendment to 70%.
Gerlach? No. Canell? Yes. Meister?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Minno?
Abstained.
Lyerly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So that's done, right? We'll move on to, I'm sorry, that's the amendment. Now we have to actually address the motion. Apologize. Any, any discussion?
Should we reread the motion so everybody's aware of what we're voting for? Not just us, but the people who are watching?
Sure. So the motion that we're voting on is that we move that the district transition to the Internal Protection from the current 82.5% of income replaced to 70% of income replaced as presented be approved. Kenzie?
Minno?
Abstained.
Becker?
Aye.
Meister?
Yes.
Canell?
Yes.
Gerlach?
Aye.
McCoy?
No.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We will move on to Eight H, job description updates, please. Will someone please read the motion?
I move that the job description updates as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Samantha?
I apologize if this was already covered. I see that it was, it's a two-year grant-funded position. Has there been discussion in terms of is this a renewable grant? And/or discussion about an ongoing opportunity to continue to fund this? Because I think this is a really critical role within the district.
Vicki?
Mike, can you join us, please? To your question, there have been discussions. I'd like Mike to fill you in on that.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, welcome. Congratulations, welcome. Thank you for the que, uh, question. We did talk a little bit about the, the idea during the work session of, you know, proof of concept led us to this recommendation, and that carries through as well. This, the funding for this is currently largely sponsored by a partnership and great work by the, the GBEA and Mr. Brent Bergstrom. And so Brent and myself have dialogued about, we believe that the first half of this year, if the board approves the position, getting the position started on board will give us valuable information about the next steps in seeking funding, right? And so is the grant renewable with the NEA? Will, is the United Way Grant renewable? Sometimes they will tell us, you can't apply for this one again, but here's a different one. So, you know, both Amy Fish's team and Brent's team have been really passionate about ensuring that something that's great can be supported. And we need to commit, from my perspective, we need to commit to reviewing and deciding, do we reallocate district resources to say this is a permanent thing based on how it's going? So that conversation would start to happen as early as kind of the six-month point of the two years so we can proceed. So that's important to us. Thank you. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions? Thank you, Mike. Kenzie?
I missed who did the first and second on that. Is anybody able to? All right, I had it backwards. Thank you. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Moving on to Eight I, revisions and repeal of Board of Education policies and rules in the 300 series. Will someone please read the motion? So Andrew?
I move that the revisions and repeal of Board of Education policies and rules in the 300 series of policies relating to teaching and learning as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All, all votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Eight J, will someone please read the motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 431, student attendance as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Moving to Eight K, Andrew, please read the motion.
I'll move that the revisions to Board of Education Rule 431, student attendance and truancy procedures as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Moving to Eight L, Andrew, would please read the motion?
I move adoptions of Board of Education policies and rules in the 800 series of policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All, all votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Meister, yes. Canell, yes. Minno, no. Gerlach, yes. Lyerly, yes. McCoy, yes. Becker, yes.
Moving to Agenda Item Eight M, Andrew, please read the motion.
I'll move that the revisions, I'm sorry. I move that the revisions to Board of Education policies and rules in the 800 series of policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Laura?
Just before we wrap this up, I just wanted to say that this, these, all this policy work is a huge amount of work. And I just want to congratulate Melissa, though I know a lot of people had a hand in this, many, many people. And every time we go through this, I, I, I just want to make people aware of how many hours we put into this. That's all.
Thank you, Laura. Other discussions? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
And finally, Agenda Item Eight N, Andrew?
I'll move that, I, I move that the repeals of Board of Education policies and rules in the 800 series of policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
With, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.